Welcome to our Budget Work session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I propose my pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in the name of this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Collette O'Fryas.
Here.
John Green.
Here.
Scott Lathan.
Here.
Brian Tobin. In the event of an emergency, visitors may refuse to enter this room in the event of an emergency. Everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to use your automobile since this may cause traffic problems and blocking coming through. Thank you, Patty. I'll turn it over to Dr. Morrow. He'll probably turn it over to Mr. Schei. But it's your meeting.
So, why don't we, I, we could stay right in our seats because Chuck made really nice big copies of what's going to come up on the PowerPoint anyway, but if you want to turn it on, Chuck, just so that, you know, it'll be seen on the TV and then you'll have a chance to see it also. And then you're on, Chuck. The first few slides are yours, all right?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure tonight to, basically to me, is a recap of where we stand with the proposed budget for the 21-22 school year. And looking at these numbers, it seems, it was, it's been a lot of work, several months of just meetings and going over numbers and worried about state aid, but, you know, looking at the numbers, to me, it seems they're very reasonable and I think it's a fair presentation for our spending plan. So, right now, our budget-to-budget increase for next year is estimated to be 1.92%. So, the tax levy related to that budget, the increase is 1.83%, which is under the tax cap based on the formulas that, that we are given. So, this budget for next year maintains all the programs, staffing, same levels as the current year. And a big part of, again, in discussions, again, with different meetings, has been some of the questions regarding where state aid is, you know, the state of the schools, the pandemic. Luckily, we don't have a large percentage of our revenue comes from state aid, but yet we're still concerned that any decent chunk would be a concern. But things turned around and the latest state aid executive, I'm sorry, the governor's proposal shows an increase of 25,000. And again, that's, it's great news, again, much better than we had anticipated, because the big question might be, is that going to be sustainable in the future? And like I said, for 25,000, it's not that big of a concern, where we should, again, any kind of fluctuation with, that's small of amount, should be manageable.
The 25,000 is an increase over last year or an increase over the first proposal?
Over the first proposal.
Okay.
So, the increase is over last year. It's a little tricky because in the state aid, which, a couple of little things, but I don't know if you mentioned, remember, in the earlier, in the first state aid runs, they had STAR monies, they had other stuff. That was, that's gone in the latest. So, now it's much clearer. There was concern because this current year, the 21-22 year, this CARES money, which they gave us CARES money to, I'll say, call it a grant, but they took state aid away from us. So, it really wasn't giving us, reimbursing us for anything. It was just giving us money that was owed to us. But basically, what I'm saying, our new runs show the foundation aid is basically a $25,000 increase from last year. What's tricky, again, is our state aid has other expense-driven aids, BOCs, a little bit of building aid, and those change from year to year. And I kind of look at, basically, what our expenses are and look for the more actual dollar amount. I believe our state aid overall increased about 35,000, but 25,000, like I said, is the foundation aid piece.
Can I just also ask, just so I make sure?
Sure.
The difference between the 1.92% and the 1.83% is the 700 and something thousand dollars in either reserves or fund balance that we're spending.
Exactly.
So, in essence, in essence, $788,000 of what was not expended in past years is going back into the tax levy so that it's not paid in taxes, and that's why it's reducing that number by that?
Exactly. All the other factors, right?
Thanks.
That's a good way to put it.
Okay. So, what I tried to show on this slide is basically looking at the expenditure budget on the left side, revenue budget on the right, and you can see towards the bottom, we have a balanced budget of the $31,604,000, again, is our proposed number in total. Tried to go through some of the key areas, so start with the expenditures, just going from top to bottom. Again, the top number, the $1,850,000, that's for everything. It's the board expenses, it's the superintendent, it's the business office, it's legal, a lot of the expenses that are not directly related to instruction. Maintenance, which is taking care of the facilities, the grounds, equipment, supplies, that's $1,933. Curriculum supervision is a million dollars. That is mostly, say, the principal's office, a lot of the, it's a little bit of the training, anything to, to give support to teachers is typically in that code. The main, of course, the instructional programs, teachers, all the different programs is the bulk, and that's the $15,976. We have transportation of $1,001. Right, yeah, nothing unusual with the transportation benefits, can, we, it's a, some, I'll say, a lucky year, you know, the East End Health Plan, there's a roughly 1% increase, very happy with that. TRS minor increase, there was a little bit of an increase for ERS, but the benefits was relatively stable. And you can see, it's a, it's a decent amount, you know, 8.7 million. And the last piece is the capital and debt service, which, basically, we have a very low debt service, luckily, so that's the $946,000 in total, for a total of $31 million. As I mentioned, we write the tax levy, $28,106, is the 1 point, make sure I got the right percentage, you know, the 1.83%. As I mentioned, the state aid was that number, we were going back and forth. We're going to talk a bit more about some of the other grants coming up. That's $1,009. And maybe I don't need to go through each revenue, but some of the other categories is basically carried forward. The key also with the fund balances at the bottom, that was increased a little bit more. The fund balance is the amount of money we give back to the taxpayers that we kind of build in our budget for some surpluses for known potential, potential swings, and that heads increasing. It's relatively a little over 1%. Again, right where you want to be. Reserves, we were a little more aggressive, definitely compared to the last year or two. As I mentioned, you know, the reserves are there, you know, you build them up in good times and you use them in bad times.
Excuse me, Chuck?
Yeah.
The benefits, is that only health benefits or are there other benefits?
No, that's all benefits. So, that's the main categories, it's social security, payment to the teacher's retirement system, employee's retirement system, unemployment, dental, health, reimbursement for Medicare Part B, you know, disability, some of the smaller.
That's both for active and retirees, correct?
Active, yes, both.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Morrow?
Do you have any questions on any of that?
The miscellaneous revenue, 239, is that a?
The 239,000?
Yes.
I know a part of it is our, we get a little bit of revenue for this.
The shared service?
I was going to say.
We get, we get some revenue from?
From, from the facilities?
We get some facilities, we get, which is shared service. We get some from when we have shared teams, but they're not, or they are housed here, than other districts, you know.
Oh, that wouldn't be under tuition?
I don't think the teams are under tuition, are they, Chuck?
Right.
I guess not, okay, okay.
What other ones would go under there? You'd know much better than me.
I'm curious.
I can get you, Chuck can get me a breakdown of that.
I can get a breakdown.
Is that miscellaneous revenue a consistent figure? You know, I go forward to next year already.
Sure.
The holes that, the holes that could come next year, that's all.
Is that a consistent figure, would you say?
Well, honestly, this, this chart is, I'll say it's new, so I didn't, we didn't have this exact slide last year.
Okay.
I think in the past, I would try to have one or two slides on revenue, and I know I would break it out more, so I know this is, this is kind of not as exact in the past.
But is it?
So, I think the answer is no. We probably don't have a, like I said, quick question, this is a new slide.
But the funds are consistent?
The number, yeah.
Yeah, in other words, if you looked at, you know, it's consistent, we're not going to see a hole next year because of?
Correct, no. Yeah, I mean, I know, I mean, it's interest in there, there's just some, we get BOCs, they give us back money based on, after the year end.
Okay.
Which is very hard to calculate, and miscellaneous revenue, which is E-rate, like I said, the chunk.
The tuition is New Suffolk, any special, it's the, that is tuition being correct?
Tuition.
That's tuition that's paid.
Tuition mostly is the, the New Suffolk and Greenport.
Okay.
The bulk of the 240.
Yeah, we reinforce, of course.
Special education, I guess.
So.
Right.
The next slide is a lot of the stuff that people have been seeing in the paper a lot recently, and some of the stuff that we talked about. I'll talk about the rescue plan first. I'll talk about the CORSA one second, because that changed drastically in this year's, in this budget run. So, in the paper, when it talked about the rescue plan, it said we were getting $1.39 million. It says that it's based on income. They haven't given us a clear breakdown. Title I funds have something to do with it, but even that, we know a little bit about how our Title I funds are calculated, but we don't know completely. We get our allocation from the state, and it's never, some of these formulas are never fully explained. When we actually got our budget run, it wasn't the 1.39 that had been reported in the media, and it was reported to the media by the state, it was the 1.18651. You know, again, I don't know what the change was. The change makes sense to me because, I just have to turn this ringer off, the change makes sense because, you know, the districts around us are significantly lower than that, so I was surprised that we were as high as we were. We don't really know exactly how this money is going to be used yet. They did give us a, they gave us a, an overlying general idea, and they're going to give us more specific guidance. It is a special aid fund. It is not to be used as part of a general aid fund. It's a one-shot deal. It will be over three years, they tell us, and they will categorize what we can use it for and what we can't use it for, and it will be recouped very similar to a grant. So, the way that it gets reported is very misleading, because when people read about it or they see it on the news, it looks like we're getting $1.4 million more, and that should go into our operating budget, but we're getting the opportunity to recoup up to that much money over the next three years if we happen to spend it in a way that falls into their grant parameters. So, we will try to recoup as much money as we can from this. There are certainly areas that they've told us that this will be used on, that we can absolutely, if we don't already do, be doing, that we will need, you know, like reading recovery programs, or jumpstart programs, or credit recovery programs for students that had a difficult time through the pandemic, and all of those would fall into this, some of our tech purchases and things like that. So, we're going to look at, over the next couple of years, trying to recoup as much of this money as we possibly can, but I think it's very important for everybody to understand that when it's reported that Southold's getting 1.18 million, you know, $1,181,651, that's, we're not getting that. We're going to have the opportunity to put in for that over the next three years as part of a grant, as long as we use those monies in line with what the grant parameters are.
So, Tony, the money that we spent in the last 13 months?
Yes.
We can apply for reimbursement from this 1.18?
No, that, the money that we spent in the last 13 months, we're going to, we already applied for this year for the 150, they withheld about $157,000 of this year's money, and then we had to keep a tally of everything we spent, and then we have to put in for that money to be, to be reimbursed to us.
But this is going to be the same kind of thing? You spend the money and then you apply to get reimbursed for it?
If, if you get approved.
Yeah.
Right, if I can, right, that was the CARES Act, 150,000. I think that, to me, I, it's similar to me of the Corona response, the 470,000, since it could be used for PPE. To me, any amounts that we have spent, because we've spent over 150, we could potentially apply anything we have in charge to this grant.
If the guidelines allow us to.
Anything above, beyond, we haven't already been reimbursed for.
And I think it could go back.
Yeah, then we will look to add that into these grants to get reimbursed for it. And then going forward, you know, the, since Chuck mentioned it already, the, you know, the coronavirus response and relief supplement, there's large tech areas in there, and as much as we spend money on tech regularly, we spent more on tech this year. We spent more on online programs this year. We spent more on upping our bandwidth.
We had to have hotspots.
Yeah, we bought, the hotspots, we already put into, one of them already. So, we will be looking, the 470,000 is a more immediate, you know, that was originally part of our 1.9 million dollars that the state was giving us as aid. They were supplement, they were supplanting 470,000 of it and putting this in and saying, you're getting 1.9 in aid. When it went out to the houses, that was removed, and the 1, the 1.9 was given to us as foundation aid, as it should have been in the first place. And then this was also in our runs as additional to that. They have parameters for this, too. A lot of it has to do with air purification systems. We've spent a lot of money upgrading the filters that we use in our systems that cost about four times as much. Every system in our school that, that has air purification now is housed with the MERV-13 filter, which are the, the ones that are, we are capable to run on our system and that are, you know, they're the minimum for what can be considered useful in filtering out virus and infection, and that, you know, it's expensive. It wasn't something that we budgeted for. MERV-13 filters cost about four times as much as your regular filters. And, you know, we've, we've utilized them in every univent and, and air filtration system, including the one in this room. We have some of those air filtration systems that, you know, they're a little bit older, and when you put MERV-13 filters into them, they have to work a lot harder. So, you know, we've had to, we've had to maintain them a lot more than we did in the past, and we're going to have to replace them a lot sooner than we would have had in the past, because, you know, think about breathing, and then think about breathing through a straw. You know, you're going to get a lot less chance that you're going to get something you don't want through that straw, but after doing that for 10 months, like we've been doing, you're going to be really tired from sucking through that straw, because it's filtered down and it's smaller. Our filtration systems are doing that now and have been for 10 months, so it's going to cost us money to, you know, to upkeep them or replace some of them. So, we're looking to utilize these monies to try to do a lot of those things, you know. We've been using our Promethean boards and our SMARTboards to the point where some aren't even working anymore and we have to replace them. And they're got, they got a lot more use than they did in past years, so we're looking to replace some of those.
Can we do something like replace lockers so they're not right next to each other, so the students are spread further apart? Can you do structural things like the cafeteria, so the seating is further apart, or?
Maybe.
Those kinds of things?
Yeah, you know, once, once we get more explicit guidance, we'll be able to figure out some more of those things that we could possibly do. The things that we know that we can do, we're starting to look at now, like, some of the things that we know that we can do, the federal government, the state government knows we have to do them. They know that filtration costs a lot of us a lot more money, they know that technology costs a lot of us, so they told us that these grants will have to do with those.
And the testing's going to be going on?
Yes, yeah, the testing, we pay, we pay for testing when it comes to the personnel that does it, the, the actual county purchase, all the testing gives them to us, we don't pay for them.
Do we get reimbursed for the labor for the personnel?
It's possible, you know. It, it goes into the Corona, it goes into our tally of Corona expenses. We, you know, Chuck actually keeps a spreadsheet of additional expenses now. Unfortunately, it doesn't include all of them, like, we always bought cleaning supplies, so cleaning supplies don't go on that list, because we always purchase them. But when we do an annual at the end of this year, you're going to see that our cleaning supplies were significantly more expensive than they were in past years, because the way and what we had to use to clean, we, you know, is very, very different, you know. So, we're going to look to try to recoup as much, if not all of that, as we possibly can, and then upgrade some of the things that we have that, you know, we may have been looking to upgrade a little further down the road now, like, you know, like I said, the ventilation system in here is one of the things we're looking at, some of the SMARTboards and Promethean boards that may have lasted a couple more years without the use they got, we're looking at. And we're hoping that we can put all of these into these particular grants, but I just, I just think it's very, it's very important that everybody understands that these are one-shot deals, they're great to do, the ventilation system in a room like this, because it won't have to be done again for another 15 or 20 years. You know, it won't have to be done annually. They're not great to use to pay for an administrator or a teacher that you're going to have to pay for again next year.
They can't do that.
Because it's, it's, you know, this is going to last, the first one for two to three years, and the last one's going to last for about a year or two, and then they're going to be gone. And that, you know, we can't put sustained expenses into these grant funding opportunities, because then we will end up with a shortfall down the road, you know. So, that is, that's the way we're planning, and that's the way we're looking to move forward. So, any other questions on any of this?
But that is a form of revenue, in a sense, right?
Possible revenue, yes. It's a, it would be, it would be a possible form of revenue in the future, yeah.
But with budget numbers, not, these numbers are not included.
They're not, because they, they're not, because we haven't been able to recoup any of them yet.
I understand.
One of them doesn't start till next year.
I understand.
Actually, both of them start next year, right? The 470s doesn't start till next year either, right?
Um.
We might be able to use some of this year's expenses, but I don't believe that, you know.
I mean, I was, I don't know the exact date of the start, I mean, I think it's, to me, it's July 21 to 22.
Which is next fiscal year for us. So, you could possibly see some of these as revenues on future budgets, yes.
In a sense, it's a revenue.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, hopefully is. You know, I mean, I'd feel a lot more comfortable if we had the specific guidance that explained, really, what we can and can't do.
Why would you expect that?
Well, listen.
Right, but I think, I think to your point.
To take it out of A.
Excuse me?
I checked my mind on that.
Well.
I mean, what smart, calm, rational individual explained to those guys, listen, you are going to put these people in a hole the following year?
Right.
And how did the scars align for them all to go, you know?
I don't know.
Probably a really smart board member that went up to Albany and pointed that out.
Right, but I, but I do believe, Tony, Dr. Morrow, that it is absolutely important that, you know, when we keep saying, yeah, it's considered revenue, but not pre-revenue, you know what I mean? And I think it's really important for that, that if it's not spent on specific things, it's not revenue for?
It's grant money.
For general operations and stuff like that. I mean, I, you know, so.
But it's grants, and a grant is different.
It's grants, and it has to be spent very specifically, and not for anything that we choose or that we think would be?
Like, we can't take this.
Important for the district, that isn't related to what they say.
We can't put all the windows in the building, you know, like, we can't do that.
Or programs or anything else.
Yeah.
And I, and I think because, you know, the people, there's been a lot of money thrown around, I can tell you just in my business, there's been a lot of money thrown around to stuff like that, and the reality is, is that, you know, they are, it is absolutely for expenses that you would not normally have.
It's a one-shot.
Yep.
That's the purpose of it. You know, the purpose of both of these grants is to cover monies that districts have outlaid, and the truth is, we've been very, very fortunate that the size of our district, the size of our classes, the amount of support we had, we didn't outlay. I spoke to one district, and they believe that they spent almost $10 million extra on faculty and staff.
Just faculty, yeah.
Just this year. Just this one year that they weren't budgeted for. They took $10 million out of reserves. One of our neighboring districts opened a shuttered building, hired an entire building staff so they could have all their kids in. They're going to be, you know, their, their numbers are not going to align, so without the millions, they happen to be a lot larger, without the millions that they got in this particular grant, they would have to then close that school next year, or they would have to go for like a 20% or 10% or 5% budget increase. You know, so, we're very, very fortunate. Our numbers are, are small compared to other places. You know, you look at, there's just eight or 10 million, you know. We're a smaller district, but we also have a little bit less of a need, you know. So, our, these numbers are fair and will help us pay for some of the things that we, you know, the ultraviolet, the ultraviolet lights that we use to kill infection and these things, you know, we weren't looking to buy $5,000 lights to put in the cafeteria every night.
Right, absolutely.
But we've been extremely, extremely fortunate. We haven't closed school this year since the very beginning, whereas many other schools have closed all throughout, and I believe that some of the reason for that is because of these things that we have, you know, chose to spend our money on, and things that we've put in place that we do daily, like, if you go out in the halls now, you'll see the guys walking around with the electrostatic sprayers spraying every classroom, and they do that every night. It costs money. You have to buy the sprayers, you got to buy the chemical, you have to pay the guys. It's been worth it, because our kids are all in school every day, and they're playing sports, and, you know, so it's very well worth it, and we'll be able to hopefully recoup some of those expenses through these grants. Once we get the final guidelines, Chuck and I will start working on putting that together. I do believe that the American Rescue Plan, I do believe that they will not let us recoup it, oh, in a year, I think they're going to make us recoup it over two or three, you know, that's the way it reads when you look at the, the information we have been given, but.
And if you don't use it, you lose it.
If you don't use it, you lose it, yes, just like all of our grants. Or if it's denied, then you can't fit it into another category, you lose it.
Right, right. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question, maybe, I know we're not adopting the budget tonight, but sometimes, Chuck, or quite often, or annually, you'll give us the per household increase dollar amount for the, for the new budget, what, what each household can expect their taxes will go up. Do we have that figure? And if not, can you just get it to us?
You did that in the first hearing, I think.
I don't, no, because, no, because they worked the budget down from that, remember?
No, I know, yeah, so, I mean, we had a general idea back then, but yeah.
We can get that for you.
Yeah, if you could, please. That's, I think that's the, the dollar amount that.
Chuck might even have it as he goes to his papers. You have it in your office?
I think that's the figure most families look for, you know, what it's going to cost them more a year.
This might need two minutes.
I have a question on the bottom line budget number.
I'm sorry, can you just, I'm sorry, sir, can you just state your name? We usually don't take.
Yeah, I'm Neil Pfizer.
Okay.
I live in, up in Southold, in Oak Creek Drive.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. And I'm turning this out off the school district website, and it was dated 4/22/20, and it showed a bottom line of 31010.
That was last year's budget.
That was last year's budget.
2020 was last year's budget. We're doing next year's budget.
Our budgets go from July 1 through June 30.
Oh, okay, well, this I'll turn it off a couple weeks ago.
But you said it said 20 on it, not 21, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't adopted a budget yet, so only the budget presentations would be on there for this year.
Okay, so.
Yeah, once we.
Last year, 31010 was the budget.
Yes.
What was the, what was the expended and encumbered for that year?
We don't know it yet, because our year's not up until the end of June.
We unfortunately have another two, two and a half months in our year.
Can you forecast?
In a school district, it's difficult.
Because the year before, there was a $2 million surplus on the expended and encumbered, was about $2 million under the budget, and the year before that was about $400,000 under the budget. So, those two years, 2018 and 2019, cumulative was about $2.4 million excess, or reserve, I guess, is what it is.
It's, you know, it's, it could be a lot of different things. It's, you know, it's, it could be a lot of different things. Last year's, yeah, last year's budget was, last year's budget is one that's very difficult to go by because we closed school. I wasn't in South Hall, but this is true of every school district. We closed school and we stopped providing services for almost three months. So, that left a great deal of surplus that normally would never have been there in past years. You know, then there is, there is a certain number, amount of...
2020, 21, you're talking about.
That was last year. No, that was 1920. That would be the 1920 fiscal year.
That's the 2 million surplus.
I wasn't here, so I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but you're telling me that's what you got.
We shut down mid-March, so we had a lot of savings.
You spent 28.582 versus the budget of 30.03.
Yes, but in our, in our 12-month year, we stopped, you know, we stopped working two or three months earlier. So, a lot of our services that we may have provided and paid for, we didn't. Others we did because we were contracted to and we had to.
And those surpluses were then put into the reserve funds.
Yeah.
Right, so, does a reserve fund show up in the...
We did that at our last budget hearing. We went over all the reserves.
On the first...
No, no, it was on an earlier, it was in the first and second presentation.
There are more, there's more than one reserve fund.
Number of reserves.
There's various types of reserves that you can put, extra funds in for future uses for very specific reasons. And in our last, was it our last budget hearing? All of our reserves are listed there and what funds are in them that we can pull from to assist in current year budgets if we need them.
So, does the current year budget pull those reserves?
Pull some of them.
Well, you can see it right there on the 800...
It's pulling about 788,000 dollars, yes.
The fund balance and the reserve.
Yeah.
Almost 800,000 dollars.
We're utilizing almost 800,000 dollars of money that we didn't spend in the past to lower this year's budget. That's why our budget-to-budget increase is a 1.92, and our, and our levy, which is what the taxpayer sees, is a 1.83. The difference between the 1.83, although it only looks like maybe 1%, 1% of $32 million is a lot of money.
Right.
So, that 1% is money that we're taking from reserves. Because we want all of our reserves to be funded because, no different than, you know, you don't spend everything you make every month and end up with zero because then if something were to happen, you'd be out on the street. We're pretty much the same.
Of course.
You know, so, the state tells...
But it's real money that sits in a bank or wherever it sits.
Yes, yes, yes.
And we, and we...
Yes, that's what it's for.
What it has helped us, right, what it has helped us do over the years because we like to think that we've been pretty, pretty good the last several years is, instead of borrowing a lot of money, tax anticipation notes, we were borrowing, gosh, $17 million, I think, at one point. Now, it's like $3 or $4 million, right? Because we have those funds that we can utilize to do those kinds of things. So, there are ways that, that the bank accounts, if you will, are used.
Okay, and then I have a couple, I don't really wanna interrupt.
That's all right.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions. Is the current enrollment for the whole school 767, is that the right number?
For the whole district, not really, but that's just because it changes daily. We had kids in and out this week, but it's approximately 775, yeah.
That's a good number.
For the district, not, not including pre-K.
Right.
Pre-K's not in there.
Right. And then, the number of teachers, I see 72 and 78 sometimes. What are the total, the total number of teachers?
I thought it was closer to 80, so I would, you know, I'd have to look, but I thought we were...
Nurses, I think it's around 98, including them.
So, there's two, there's two categories of salaried employees, teachers and then others.
Yeah.
And so, I have 78 and 80 for others, so a total of 156.
Excuse me, where, where are you getting the numbers from? I'm just curious.
Uh, from a New York State website.
Those numbers typically run about three years behind.
Be the see-through report, I mean, not the...
Well, they reference 20, they reference, that's where the 767, so they reference that 20, 20 to 20.
Yeah, we haven't even finished this year.
Anyway, can you give me the current numbers?
You know them off the top of your head? They're not far off.
Let me tell you, I know teachers are just under 100, like roughly 98. I believe our other category of non-instructional help, I wanna say 50?
So, that number's, so the total's close, but it's more teachers than others than the number that I have.
Is that more administrators than your others?
Well, because, because depending on how they quantify them, so for instance, a social, a social worker in the state might be quantified as other. Here, it's quantified as a teacher because they work in the teacher contract.
Okay.
A nurse might be an other in the state, but here, it's a teacher because they work under the teacher contract.
So, it's close to 150?
I thought it was...
I mean, I think in total, I wanna say 175 sticks in my head because then the other category is administrators.
175, okay.
Yeah, we were, we were just under 180. Because I pulled the list, I came in this summer new, and I pulled the list to start calling people, and it was in, it was in the 170s.
So, when they do this, a teacher, pupil per teacher ratio, and I see various numbers on that for the district as well.
Yes.
What numbers do you use for pupils per teacher out of the 767?
We don't really use one. What we have is caps for our classes. We have board adopted numbers, so for instance, K to 2, we don't go over 22. Our average is probably closer to 16 or 17, depending on the year.
It's a lot lower than that. So, and the New York State, it shows at 11 to 1, pupils per student. That's overall, and the New York State average was 13 to 1.
Yeah, I would have to look at it to see what they're using.
You have to pull specialized.
Yeah. You know, the problem is if I have, say, one specialized class that only has eight students in it, that might drag my average down by four, but that's not really my average class size. My average class size might be 16, where it would show, yeah.
It's adding all, it's adding it all, it's one number, I understand.
Right, and you could, you could technically have a class of 20, 20 kids, 20 students with two teachers in there, depending on the, the...
And you could have a class of four or six.
Yes.
You have to pull your specialized out, is really what they do.
We do, we do have classes of four, you know, they're specialized.
So, you're not aware of that number? I think you have to report that number to the state, don't you?
It's possible.
I think we plug the numbers in.
Yeah.
Plug the numbers.
They don't make it up.
We plug the numbers in, I imagine, and they come up with that percentage that you just spoke of, I'm guessing.
Right, we don't, we don't technically, that number, we give them other information in certain reports, and then they, they kinda come up with the calculation on like what the report card...
And then, there's a number here that shows South Hall Union Free School District as number 565 out of 787 in the state.
Based on what criteria?
Based on whatever the state rates, the scores of English and math and whatever, you know, the, you know, how the students learn.
Yeah.
So, so that the, I know that the elementary school is way low, but the high school is higher than the average, but in combined, you were falling quite low.
Yeah.
Part of that is, part of that, I think, has to do with...
So, I was wondering why that might be.
I would have to look at the criteria for what, like if they're using graduation rate, if they're using four-year college acceptance, if they're, I've worked in districts that...
No, I think it's test scores.
Yeah, test scores, test scores hold a great deal more value in some districts than they do in others.
This is statewide, I mean, they rate...
Yeah, I'll say it again, though. Test scores in some districts hold a great deal more value. So, for instance, maybe 90% of their kids actually take the tests, whereas about 50% of ours opt out. So, our test scores are pretty much meaningless. When 50% of your students don't take the test, typically, you're higher performing students.
Why don't they take the test?
Because their parents, no, their parents opt them out. In New York State, they have the right to do that. The state gives them the right to do that.
So, maybe that's why we're so poor schooling.
It's, it's, yeah, again, I would have to really look at it to tell you if it's a, if it's a fair indication of, you know, what South Hall of Kenning can't do.
How many students?
Now, the Regents exams, the Regents exams, let me just finish to answer your other question.
Yeah.
The Regents exams are required to graduate, so kids that may not take tests in fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth typically do take the Regents, and that's why you see that rise.
I think that's the test they use to gauge this.
Regents are only given, you only have to take four to get out of high school, so if they're using that, it's a terrible measure of what a school district can or can't do because some kids take a dozen and some kids take four. But state tests in the lower grades, which are absolutely used to quantify, there are no Regents in the elementary school, so they can't be using those. The tests that they take there, 50% of our kids opt out of, whereas in the high school, you can't opt out of an English Regents, otherwise you can't graduate. So, when you, when you...
Are you aware of this, 565 out of 787? You never heard this before?
No.
Interesting.
You know.
Okay.
What was, how many students with disabilities do we have?
I don't know off the top of my head. That wouldn't be a number that, it's on our state report card, and I could get it from my director of special ed.
It would be 100?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Perhaps, maybe I could suggest you could reach out to Dr. Moore and set up an appointment with him to go over this because those numbers are not readily available. Maybe you could shoot him in...
It's a very large budget for that kind of...
No, I understand that, and...
Yes.
And I just, in my mind, I'm seeing, why are we spending so much money? Do we have that many students with disabilities?
Well, our specialty percent was, I don't even remember, but we don't...
Well, either way, I agree.
I think maybe an email to Dr. Moore with specific questions...
I'd be happy to get those numbers for you. I don't know them off the top of my head, and I wouldn't hazard a guess at them, you know.
And then, on the benefits, you asked a question about health insurance, and the answer was that included retirees as well as current teachers.
Mm-hmm.
And that explains why that number is so high.
Well, it's not just health, that was my question, was it just health benefits? And it's not just, excuse me, excuse me, my question was, is it just health benefits? And it's not just health benefits. There's social security, pension, and all that, so...
No, 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 I understand that. Out of the total 8.5 million, which is benefits, correct?
8.7, 8.7.
8.7, now, I guess, I guess this whole budget, out of the total benefits, 4.8 million is for health insurance. So, nearly half or better than half is for health insurance. And I thought you asked whether that included for retirees...
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Right, so, out of the 4.8 million, what percentage of that is for retirees versus currently working?
That's not a number we're gonna have. Again, that's a specific question. I think it's better emailed because that's not a number any of us would have already known.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that off the top of my head. I don't think anybody knows it off the top of their head today.
Certainly, but right now, you're talking about numbers where there's volumes of paperwork, and that paperwork is not here right now.
And it has to be calculated.
I'm just looking at the big budget numbers. Is this a budget meeting?
I understand, but the entire backup for that is not here right now.
It's the final of five budget meetings. Some of, some of these numbers were broke, you know, some of the things you're asking